Good evening and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, March 26. It is now 7:40 and we do apologize for the delay. We were short a quorum, but luckily we now have all our members to make up that quorum. So, thank you for your patience and for those watching, thank you very much for still tuning in. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor DePietro.
Not here, yes, excuse.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor O'Clare.
Excuse.
Counselor Carrasco.
Absent.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Five present, one absent, two excused.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, two absent, two excused.
Okay. We're going to consider, first off, before we get started, I just want to make a motion to change up this agenda item, or agenda order. I would like, because of the long wait that so many here have put up with tonight, I would like to move the agenda items number four and four, five, six, and seven, four, five, six, seven, and eight, all of them, to come right after number 14, so I want to switch them down. I want to move all those initial items, four, five, six, seven, and eight, to go after the last, actually, Mr. McGowan, that one's no longer on, so I think that one's been taken off.
Number 12.
Yeah. So, Ms. McGowan will not be, is not a contender. So, we're going to move those to under number, I've got number 13.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, it's five. So, we'll move this along for all of you waiting patiently today. All right, so, agenda item number three is consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of March 12, 2018.
So moved.
Okay, discussion. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one additional correction in addition to what I had submitted previously. Page eight, about a third way down, second line that begins recreational marijuana. Please strike out my initials RTN where I corrected where Counselor Steves had made the statement, not me. Thank you.
Are you all set with that? Okay. Oops, Counselor Steves.
Just a minor correction in the section under item 22, Counselor's Form, where I said it said this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the annual book said that should be, at the time, it was next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And WRTP, the first reference should be WRTA. Nothing major.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous motion carries. All right, now, we will move down to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Robert M. Salisbury as a full-time police sergeant for the town of Southbridge effective immediately. So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Deputy Chief.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I would like, without reservation and with honor, to present Robert Salisbury as our next permanent full-time sergeant for the Police Department. Officer Salisbury started his career back in 2006 as an auxiliary. He was a self-sponsored to the academy. He put himself through the academy. That takes a lot with a family to go six, seven, eight months of full training without any pay. After the academy, he was hired as a full-time officer for us in November of 2006. After that, he became a full-time police officer and then quickly rose the ranks. He was a detective for four years for us, did a lot of narcotics, was a sexual assault investigator, did a great job with that. After that, in May of 2017, he was promoted as provisional sergeant. He's been doing that job since then. He's been doing a great job. The results of the provisional test came out in February. He was scored number one out of six candidates, so he was the number one candidate as well. He's also has been a great help to me in the Cops Kids program. Part of the success with that has been through him. He's been a great partner. And with that said, I push him forward as our next permanent sergeant for the Southbridge Police Department.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Nash.
Through you, just very quickly, I did attend that PPP meeting when Officer Salisbury was presented as the candidate for this permanent sergeant position. Many great things were said at that meeting, and I think everyone agreed, myself included. Very happy to see his appointment coming to council tonight. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Manna.
Yes, I support this appointment fully. Sergeant Officer Salisbury has been a wonderful police officer since I've known, I've known him for a few years now, and he is involved with the Cops and Kids program. He's done a lot with narcotics, and he's just, he's very involved with the community. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, then. All those in favor? Five. Motion carries. Congratulations. Vote to confirm the appointment of Jesus Suarez as a full-time police officer upon successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by Human Resources Civil Service. So moved.
Second.
Again, through you, Madam Chair. This is a very qualified candidate. This is a position that's replacing, unfortunately, a candidate that didn't make it through our field training officers. I know I speak for the chief, as I say, during our tenure, we want officers of the town of Southbridge qualified, well-trained police officers, and that's our goal. Unfortunately, one candidate didn't make through. We're fortunate enough to have such a qualified candidate on our list. He's homegrown. He's actually working for the University of Massachusetts, low campus, very diverse campus, just like Southbridge, so I think he'll work out here. He was homegrown, high school, Southbridge High School graduate. He worked for the Auxiliary Department for four years. He worked for the Harrington Hospital Security for four years. He's against and self-sponsored, put himself through the academy on his own dime, and he's fully trained, which is going to save the town of Southbridge over $30,000. And he could step right in and start working next week after a brief field training officer program. So, it's with great honor I present, he's bilingual as well, is with great honor I present Jesus Suarez as the next police officer of the town of Southbridge.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, another fine candidate that had been presented at that PPP meeting, and his record speaks for itself. Very pleased to see a candidate of his caliber stepping forward for the Southbridge Police Department. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Congratulations. Agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as Inspector of Animals effective immediately through April 30, 2019, acting under the authority of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 129, Section 15 and 16.
So moved.
Second.
And if you want to say anything about this?
Just explain the position a little. This is not a new position of animal control officer. This is an animal inspector, which is by law has to be reappointed every year by the Town Council. So, every year, we have to come forward with not a new position, just a reappointment of the position. Inspects barns, you know, livestock, and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Thank you very much. She's doing a great job, too. I want to make a correction. I spoke inadvertently. I had mentioned that 14 was the one we were crossing. It's actually 12. Sean Moynihan, who's taking himself back. He's got a job somewhere else. So, it's 14. I apologize, Mr. McGowan. I had the name M when I was looking at the agenda. We didn't get a new printed one, so I had crossed the wrong one. I apologize for that. All right. So, thank you to the police chief, deputy chief, and all the work to get our new hires. Appreciate that. Moving on to agenda item number 12. Vote to confirm the appointment of Sean Moynihan.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, 13. Yeah, I said the same thing, didn't I? I crossed it up.
Vote to confirm the appointment of Nathan Abishan, thank you very much, of Auburn, Mass, as a permanent full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, pending medical clearance, and the successful completion of the Massachusetts Physical Abilities Test, known as PAT. And now
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chief DeFranzo.
Thank you, Counselor. It's with great pleasure that I do recommend Nate Abishan for the position of firefighter paramedic for the town of Southbridge Fire Department. During our hiring process, he displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, and ambition. In 2015, he became a Call Firefighter EMT with the town of Auburn, and he obtained his firefighter 1-2 certification in that same year of 2015, and has attended many other training classes and received certifications or certificates. He's currently certified as a state and national paramedic. He also has all of the appropriate ancillary certifications as well, HABLS and ACLS. He currently works full-time as a paramedic for an ambulance company, providing patient transport to 911 service for the city of Worcester and the town of Milbury. And we did a complete background check, and there were no unusual findings that we needed to be cognizant of, so I highly recommend Nate Abishan for our open position within the department. Again, these are not ads to the department, these are replacements.
Great. Okay. Any comments? Ms. Town Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, an opportunity to talk to the Auburn Fire Chief about this particular candidate. We had a long, very positive discussion about this gentleman. He talked about not only the gentleman, but comes from a long, proud family of public safety officials. Just want to welcome to the team. Think he's going to be a great asset, and it's nice to see someone who is aggressively trying to improve himself, so we think you're going to be a great asset. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? It's five. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Welcome. Vote to confirm the appointment of Charles McGowan of Dudley, Mass. as a permanent full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, pending medical clearance, and the successful completion of the Massachusetts Physical Abilities Test, PAT.
So moved.
Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. Again, it's a great pleasure that I recommend Charles McGowan for the position of full-time firefighter paramedic for the town of Southbridge. During our hiring process, he also displayed a very high degree of integrity, responsibility, ambition. He, too, comes from a public safety family, so this is something that he's striving to be as a full-time firefighter paramedic. In 2010, he became a Call Firefighter with the town of Dudley, obtained his firefighter 1-2 certification in 2012, and has also attended many other training classes and received certifications and/or certificates. In 2011, he became a basic EMT, and in 2017, became certified as a state and national paramedic. And again, that program is a two-and-a-half-year program, where they dedicate two years of their lives to get that. That's not an easy program to accomplish, so, you know, many great thanks to those guys for putting in the time and effort to get that. He also has all the appropriate ancillary certifications as well. He currently works full-time as a public safety dispatcher while remaining as a Call Firefighter Paramedic for the town of Dudley. Again, a complete background check was done, and nothing unusual was found, so I truly recommend Charles McGowan for the position of firefighter for the town of Southbridge.
Thank you. Anybody? All right. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. We are now going to move back up on the agenda. We'll take a couple minutes before we start that one. Well, actually, we can move on to these. They're going to move out to the foyer usually. I wish they'd come back and visit sometime. It's so funny. It'd be nice to fill up the Okay, we're going to try to keep moving forward. I think we can talk over the happy voices in the back. So, we're going to go on to the subcommittee summaries with the relevant minutes to be read at each agenda item. 4A is general government. Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see. First of all, we have a couple of the items that are going to be on this agenda. Agenda items number 17, 18, 19, 32, and 33 were on the GenGov meeting agenda for March 21st. And, other than that, the only thing we discussed was, we did some more discussion of creating the Rule 6A Amendment for council rules, and made some tweaks to that, and that'll come up for final approval probably in the next GenGov meeting. And that was pretty much it. So, the rest of the items will come up when we get to them.
Great. Thank you. Department of Public Works, that's Counselor DePietro, who can't be here.
I'll do that since I took their minutes, too. And in that case, most of the agenda items are also on this agenda. So, we've got all, all the various transfers are here, and, let's see, the roof project is there, so a nice, I think they're all there. I'll get to them all as we get to them, so.
Okay.
Oh, and, oh, I forgot to mention that GenGov does have a meeting on Wednesday at 6:30 PM in the Veterans Room, and we'll be doing a couple of appointments to recreating the Agricultural Commission, the Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, whatever that is, and we'll finish off the Rule 6A thing, so. And I'm not sure if DPW has a meeting scheduled at the moment.
Thank you. Agenda 4C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Meeting minutes from March 1st were in everyone's packet. All those items had already been addressed at our last meeting. Next meeting is this Thursday, March 29th, at 6:30 downstairs in the Rice Conference Room. This week, we have BayPath presenting their budget, as well as the library, Rec Center, recreation department, community center, Veterans Agent, and the Health Department, all on Thursday night, again at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. 4D is planning and development, and that is Counselor O'Clare, she's not here. And 4E, protections of persons and property. Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a meeting, I think it was last week. Counselor Steves took the minutes. However, we did address the items.
Just now?
Yeah. So, the meeting minutes are available. They're public record. Also, I have a meeting scheduled for April 2nd at 6:00 PM. We're, I don't know which room it's going to be in yet, but I do know at the very end, we will be discussing the budget. So, the agenda has not come out yet on that, but there is a meeting, April 2nd, 6:00 PM, for PPP.
Also? Okay. Agenda item number five is chairman's announcements. Something, it was mentioned, the Agricultural Commission Committee is trying to form, and we could use some more members on that. If you're interested, check in with the Town Manager's Office for an application. That is a newly forming committee. It's something that's been in our bylaws forever, but it just has not been active. So, we have two members, but they're going to need three out of five to have a quorum and have a meeting, so we could use some more members if you are at all interested in that area. And I also make a note that Commissions on Disability could use more members. I know there are other committees, too, but those are two that come to mind immediately. I really don't have too much else to say this evening, so I'm going to move on to Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you very much. A couple of quick releases of information. First, from Whitewater, which takes care of our water plant. Charlton Water Department to perform hydrant flow tests, Southbridge, Charlton. Southbridge Water Department will be performing hydrant flow testing on Wednesday, March 28, 2018, at approximately 9:00 PM. The location tested in and around Trolley Crossing Road in the town of Charlton. The procedure will include testing the operation and capacity of the hydrants in the distribution center and distribution system. The department requests that during this period, customers check their water before washing clothes. Customers may get accumulated sediments in their house laterals the next morning. This will clear after a brief run at the water at the tap, and this is distributed to all different organizations within Southbridge and Charlton. Next, the Department of Public Health, specifically Eric Jacobson, our Health Inspector, is announcing Beautify Southbridge Day 2018. This is an event that our Inspection Director of Inspecial Services does every year with his team. The town of Southbridge is holding its annual Beautify Southbridge Day Cleanup Event on Saturday, April 21st, rain date, April 22nd, 8:30 AM at Town Hall. We encourage all residents to come. We assign people different streets. It's really a great day, and it helps to beautify the town and make it look great. So, we thank everybody for volunteering and look forward to a large group this year as well. I also want to announce two new employees. These are replacement employees. We have filled the position of Administrative Assistant III for the Treasurer's Collector's Office, which was vacated when Joanne Batista retired, with Carmen Rivera. Carmen is a lifelong Southbridge resident, bringing over 20 years of banking experience to the position. Carmen is also bilingual in both Spanish and English, so it's great. That's the third person in Town Hall that'll actually be able to translate for us, so that's great news. We also fill the position of Assistant Town Accountant, vacated by Larissa Morrison, who left us to go back to the public sector, with Yolanda Alvarado. Hope I said that right. Yolanda is also a lifelong Southbridge resident, and is also bringing 20 years of banking and accounting experience to the position. Yolanda is also bilingual in both Spanish and English, so it's great. We actually doubled the amount of people who speak Spanish in Town Hall, so I encourage people within the Latino community to not be afraid to come into Town Hall. We do have people that can work with you if you don't speak English. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number seven, and I want to thank Robin for being patient with us. I did tell her we were going to move her down, and she was fine with that. We have a presentation this evening to Robin Lattell, as has been the tradition for quite a few years now. Donate Life is coming in April, and we have been proudly displaying the Donate Life flag over the last few years, when Robin, ever since Robin first came to me and said, can the council be part of this? And it's something that we have adopted and done. So, I'm going to make a proclamation to her, and then we will proceed with the meeting. Thank you for being here, Robyn, and you are a donor recipient, so this is near and dear to you, and we look forward to hearing a little bit about your story. So, the proclamation says, "Presented to New England donors services, New England donors services, whereas there are more than 118,000 Americans with more than 5,000 in New England who are currently waiting for a life-saving organ transplant; and whereas there are over 1 million life-enhancing tissue transplants each year that are made possible by the generous donation of corneas, bone, skin, and other tissues; and whereas we can all help to save someone's life and benefit up to 50 recipients by signing up to become an organ and tissue donor by enrolling in the Massachusetts Donor Registry when we apply for or renew our driver's license, or by registering online at www.donatelifema.org; and whereas Massachusetts is a leader in donor designation rates and is dedicated to making it fast and easy to sign up to save a life through our Registry of Motor Vehicles; and whereas this observance pays tribute to organ and tissue donors and their families whose decision to donate life enables others, like Robin, to receive life-saving organs and tissues for transplant. Now, therefore, Denise Clemens, Chairman, and the Southbridge Town Council do hereby proclaim April 2018 to be Donate Life Month." Thanks for you.
I'd like to thank Town Manager and all of you for being able to do this again. It's near and dear to my heart. I'm a resident of Southbridge. I have been all my life. I now reside in Sturbridge, but Southbridge was my hometown. I went to Southbridge High School, graduated in 1980. I had a kidney transplant January 3rd, 2010, from a deceased organ donor. I celebrate the lift of life every day. I thank all of you that own your driver's license, that are organ donors. I live my life every day to the fullest by promoting organ donation, by coming and speaking as much as I can at health fairs, local organizations that will have me speak, and I just want to thank you again. Thanks for your time, and have a great night. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Okay, agenda item number eight is citizens forum. If there's anyone who would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, you'll have five minutes. You just need to state your name and your address. Anyone? I do not see anyone rising, so we will move on. We are now going to take on agenda item number 15. That is vote to accept the layout of the Harwood Farm Road and all related easements as a public way, presented and recorded with the town clerk on March 12, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
So, you might be wondering why it's back. It's back because now that it has been recorded with the clerk, it has to come back. I think it was discussed, actually, this was not discussed at subcommittee, again, because it was already discussed once. So, now it will go back and to the planning board, I believe, if that's correct. Mr. Comey has been here waiting patiently for this item.
This item, actually, after the Town Council votes to accept, will get recorded, and it becomes a public way.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, another formality to move the process. Any questions, comments? All right. All those in favor? It's unanimous, five. Motion carries. Agenda item number 16. Fiscal year 2019 budget presentation, and we will have the Town Manager, Mr. Sanangelo.
First, I was a little excited. I thought all the people were going to actually stay here and watch the budget, but I guess it's not quite as exciting. I want to start off tonight, first of all, by thanking all of my department heads who spend a great deal of time putting together the fiscal 19-year budget. We truly have a very professional group of department heads who work very hard in this process, and this takes months and months of time to go through and set up a budget, both the regular operating budget and the capital improvement budget. And after tonight, this process will move on to Town Council, and it will be the Town Council and the subcommittee process that will move this process forward in the end. But I cannot think, in my 25 years of experience, a group of department heads that have been better than this one. They do an extraordinary job for the town. Tonight, you're going to see the fiscal 2019-year budget, and it seems here in Southbridge, the budgets get more and more difficult, and we have more and more difficult problems each year, and this year is no different than past years. So, I'm going to go through the basics, and then I'm going to get into the major issue affecting the fiscal 2019 budget. First, one of the things we're trying to do all the time is have responsible fiscal management. So, we take a great deal of time and look at every individual budget line item to make sure we're getting the most we can out of each dollar spent. Big issue here in Southbridge is controlling government spending, and we have to do that because we're a town of very limited resources, and you're going to find that, at least on the town side, the operating budget is very, very thin. There's not a lot of excess spending, as a matter of fact, and some would argue that we're spending less than we really need to, and we'll talk about that later, why that is becoming an issue. Meeting the needs of the citizens, obviously, the programs that this budget funds is really taking care of services for people, the people of our community, and this budget is all about how we best maintain current services. The major issue of this year's budget, though, is the charter school in Sturbridge. How do we deal with the financial issues surrounding the old Sturbridge Academy Charter School? And you're going to see how that impact is having an impact, not just on the school budget, but it has huge impact on the actual town budget. Now, what's our vision statement is the Southbridge must be fiscally responsible, have a budget in place that meets the needs of its citizens, and the vision to look strategically at the long-term infrastructure of the community. That, really, you're going to see more, not tonight so much, but when we do our capital budget, you're going to see us looking more at the infrastructure of the community. But it's important because with limited resources, we have a lot of infrastructure needs, and we're trying to deal with them the best way we can. Now, what are our goals and objectives? Well, this year, the biggest goal and objective is handling the fiscal issues of the new charter school in a financially responsible manner, and dealing with the reduction of the increase in state aid from the Chapter 70 formula. I'm going to talk a lot about this. This is a two-part problem. One is the increase in the costs as they relate to the new charter school, but also into, and I want to be careful how I say this, the decrease in the increase of the Chapter 70 formula. I'll explain that in just a few moments. Maintaining current services with little or no increase. Well, since I've been here for the last three years, we basically have said to all our town departments that, except for labor costs, we want you to keep a flat budget. In other words, we don't want you to increase your budget by department any more than you did last year. did last year. Now, that sounds really good, but what happens is that's really a cutting of each individual budget. Every year, we ask our department heads to do more with less money, and you can only do that for so long. Three years in a row, we've maintained almost little or no increase from the year before. At some point, we're going to have to change that. Prepare to meet the challenges of the future. We're doing that a little bit in this budget, not as much as I would like to because of limited resources. Provide reasonable funding to our school district that allows them to improve the quality of education, to our children, and to improve the reputation of the town. And this is going to be the big issue tonight, and the Town Council is going to see tonight that we're going to have some options for them to choose and for them to really consider, and they're going to have some really difficult choices to make as we go through the budget process. Improve the six-year capital improvement plan and utilize free cash in a responsible and appropriate manner. We have completely reestablished a new six-year capital improvement plan this year, so that's going to come out to the Town Council very soon, but they're going to see a whole completely revised six-year capital plan. Last year, we put one together that was way, you know, much better improved than the years before, but I think this one really starts us putting to where we really want to be in terms of educating the public and having a really strongly laid-out capital improvement plan for the six-year period. Now, today's situation, major budget issue. Again, we're going to talk about this charter school, and I'm sorry that this is going to be the issue, but we have to talk about it because this is really what's impacting the town budget. Now, let me first say that the town budget is very secure. The town budget now, I think, is fiscally responsible, and we've dealt with a lot of major problems. So I think the town's financial position on its own, excluding the education, is very stable at this point. The major budget issue is that the state approved the old Sturbridge Academy in 2017, and it officially opened in September 11th of 2017 for grades K through 3. This is a tuition-free public charter school with a maximum of 360 students, the largest quantity of those students coming from the town of Southbridge. Admission is by a lottery. Yearly lottery for available seats is held in March and is open to all residents of Massachusetts, but the preference is given to the 12 towns that compromise the district, which includes Southbridge. Now, fiscal year 18, this was really the big kind of opening for us and how it impacted us. And fiscal year 2018, 67 students from Southbridge were enrolled in the old Sturbridge Academy and were expected in fiscal year 19. Now, what's important you're going to see here is that money goes with the student. So any kid, any child that leaves our public school system takes not only themselves to the new charter school, but also takes over $14,000 with them to the new charter school. So you see the transfer of money from our public schools to the charter school, and that's what we're really going to be talking about here tonight. Now, normally, one of the things that I don't have to do is I don't have to spend a great deal of time on the telephone or working with people to try to get more state aid as it comes to education. It's usually formula-driven in our Chapter 70 funding, and I usually don't have to call up and beg for more money or try to get more money. But this year is different because we had this charter school impact, and we've talked about this for many, many months. Matter of fact, we had some discussion about this in last year's budget, and we talked about this. So I've spent a great deal of time trying to work with a host of different people to try to get additional funding to help the town of Southbridge because of the charter school issue. The charter school issue is, in the first year, we get a reimbursement of 75% of all costs of a child. So let's say it's $14,000 that goes with the child from our school system to the charter school. We get 75% reimbursement in the first year. But in the second year, that reimbursement goes down to 25%, and you could tell that's a huge impact on us, and we saw it coming. So I've had numerous conversations with our legislators, with DESI, with the State Department of Education, with just about everybody. I've sent letters to the Governor's Office, met numerous times with both Peter Durant and Ryan Fatman to talk about how we could get more aid to deal with this problem. And more recently, I was in a conversation that lasted about two hours with a gentleman named Tom Moreau, who's the Assistant Secretary for Policy and Planning in the Executive Office of Education. And all those calls were, "We have a serious problem, a unique problem here in Southbridge. We have a charter school that moved next door, and we're in what's called an underperforming school district." Now, if you were sending your child to an underperforming school district and you have an opportunity to send your kid to a charter school, a lot of parents are making that decision. That means a lot of money is leaving our public school system to go to this charter school. We saw that as a big problem, and we're trying to deal with it. Unfortunately, while this issue is at the Governor's Office, I've talked to Representative Durant today, who told me, you know, he's working with the Chief of Staff in the Governor's Office to try to get more money, but to date, we haven't got any response that we're going to get any additional money whatsoever. But it is a problem, and you're going to see why very shortly. What is the impact of the charter school? Well, importantly, if we look at fiscal year 2018, so that's the current budget year that we're in right now. The charter school assessment, in other words, the cost to Southbridge, money we have to send to the charter school, $908,140, but the 75% reimbursement gave us $614,871 came back to Southbridge. So the cost to Southbridge residents in the current year we're in is $293,269. Now, that was a big hurt on us for the budget we're in right now, and it was a big problem, but we were able to deal with it. Here's the problem, though. Fiscal year 2019, now we go from the 75% reimbursement to the 25% reimbursement. The charter school assessment went from $908,140, now it went up for the fiscal year 19 to So there's a few more students that are going to that charter school, right? Now, the reimbursement, it was $614,871, it has now fallen to $136,481. So now, the cost of that charter school to the town of Southbridge for fiscal year 2019 is $889,894. You can see the problem. Big numbers, big costs that are pushed from the state onto the town of Southbridge. That's huge in terms of our citizens here and the per capita income. We're not a wealthy community, so it's a difficult budget to deal with. Now, just if you look at the additional cost between the two years, the cost is $293,269. This year, it's costing us $889. The difference in increased cost between the two years is $596,625, something that we have to tackle. That, folks, is one half of the problem. That's scary. That's half of our problem. This is the other half, and this is the other scary half. Last year, we were very fortunate that the Chapter 70 formula, which is the main grant we get for education here in Southbridge, and it's the 70 grant is one that all towns get, and depending upon the wealth factor of your town, the number of students, there's a lot of different factors that go into this Chapter 70 formula. But in fiscal year 18, we got Chapter 70 funding of $21,187,899. In fiscal year 17, we had $20,433,070. So last year's increase in Chapter 70 funding was $754,829. That allowed us last year to give a 2.5% increase to the school system, just in the direct school administration line for our school. So it really helped us a lot, and you can see how the amount of state aid we get really helps us to how much money we can give to our school system. Jackie's shaking her head. She knows the problem. So that's huge, and that was really beneficial, and we were able to help the school system a lot last year. Now, let's look at this year. Chapter 70 formula in fiscal year 19 comparing to fiscal year 18. So when Chapter 70 funds in 19 was $21,234,039, minus out what we got in fiscal year 18, $21,187,899, and we got a whole $46,140 increase this year. Right? So the resulting loss of revenue from one year to the next, now, we're talking about of the increase, because we didn't get less than last year, we just didn't get anything above last year. $46 grand is almost nothing in far as I'm concerned. The difference is $708,689 less revenue that we had this year. Now, that would be the money that we would normally give to our public school system as that increase. So if we don't get it from the state, where do we get it from? You take the money we cost in the increased charter school assessment, and now you look at the lost revenue, it comes to about a million-three impact on the town. Now, as the Town Councils will appreciate, in fiscal year 2017, we had an $850,000 free cash issue we had to deal with, and it was tough, but we got through it, and it was one of the successes of fiscal year 17. And the Council deserves a tremendous amount of credit for supporting that and making our budget more stable in fiscal year 2017. In 2018, we dealt with $920,000 of Casella money and took that out of the budget, and it was another huge victory, I think, in stabilizing the finances of the town. That was a big problem and very difficult to deal with. This one is like a million-three swing. So as bad as the Casella funding issue was last year, this school issue is even more significant in terms of its impact on the community. Now, state funds in total, you can see, it says Cherry Street receipts. That's the combination of the three items below. You can see that in total state dollars, we lost this year $342,950 compared to last year, or the current year that we're in. You see there was the slight increase we talked about, the $46,140 in Chapter 70 money, unrestricted general aid was $123,000, and then the amount of money for the charter school, which was the big loss, is $478,000. So we got negative dollars as it relates to stated aid this year. Again, huge impact overall on our community, not having that support of the state. Now, I do want to stress here, I want to be cautious here and stress, the Governor and Legislature have been very supportive of the town of Southbridge in the past, and frankly, have done a lot of great things for us. A lot of this is driven by formulas that are in place, and they're formulas that go out to all the different towns. So I do want, I don't want to sit here as I'm talking about the reduction in state aid and beating up the Governor's Office or beating up the Legislature, because that's not my intention. But this is the facts. These are the facts, and I have to put them out there. The impact on state aid to our community this year is tremendously negative, and it's really going to show up. But I appreciate, I want to say very clear, I appreciate all the support that the Governor's Office and Legislature has given to this community. It's been great. There were some minor revenues, too, of $33,000 that was lower than last year. Now, I've talked about the fact that we don't have a lot of money to give to the school system, but I want to show you, in spite of the fact we're not going to have a lot to give directly to the public school system, I want to show you what impact other items are having on the town's budget. It's other, we give a certain amount of money and direct money to the public school system, but then we have some other accounts that help the school system, but they're in the town budget, not in the school budget, and I want to go through those. The first one is called education expenses in town budget, in the town side of the budget, and you're going to see an increase of $182,036, about a 5.36% increase. That's things like health insurance, workers' comp, pension benefits. Those are all paid directly from town accounts, but they benefit our education budget, and you'll see that is a 5.39% increase. The charter school tuition reimbursement, this is that $400-something thousand? It's $478,390. That money, again, we're not going to get that money, but it's still going to education. It's just not going to our public schools, it's going to the charter school, right? Had we been able to take that money out and put it into the school line to our public school system, that would be a tremendous benefit to our public school system. The next line is the charter school assessment. That's from the 908 to the 1,026. This is the increased assessment from the current year and what our new year assessment's going to be. That's 13.02%. Now, one of the small positive things, I guess it might be positive, is that the school choice number went down by about $83,000. One could guess that maybe a couple of kids that were in our choice schools decided to go to the charter school, right? So we might have had a small decrease there, or maybe less students went, you know, kids graduated, and there were no younger students going in. But anyway, that went down by a little bit. Now, you'll see the next line. This is the direct line that we would give to the Southbridge Public Schools, and you'll see it says $26,786,735. Now, you'll note that there's a zero increase right now, right? So this means if we keep a level budget and we give the school system none, zero, is an increase, and again, keep in mind that the $478,000 could have went to the school system, but because so many students left our public school system and moved to the charter school, the charter school is now getting that increase. Understood? So now, if you look at the bottom line, the total, you'll see it's a $695,276 increase in education funding, or a 2.17% increase in total education funding. Interesting, we have increased spending in our education funding by over 2%, but our public school system's not getting any of it, right? So this is not a lack of contribution by the town side of government, because the town side of government is giving even more for education than it did last year by over 2%. Really, the question again is who's getting the money, and you can see how that impacts. Now, I was talking about some of the outside expenses. These are some of the expenses that are paid for by the town directly, not from the education budget, but they're education expenses that are paid directly, and this number was in the last chart, it was the first one of the last chart, and you'll see that its health insurance went up by 8.98%, workers' comp went up by 7.75%, property liability insurance went up by 3.48%, pension went up by 0.13%. The total increase in funds here are about 5.39% increase. Again, that's town budgeted items that come directly from the town budget. They never go to the education budget. Now, this is the important part, and this is the part that really talks about options for our Town Council, and these are really where some difficult discussions are going to happen. Now, you're going to see in this first top line what I would call a level-funded budget or a zero percent, I'm sorry. A level-funded budget or a 0% increase in that public schools line. Again, this is just for our public schools, not the charter school and everything else. If we give them no increase and we hold them to last year's spending, that the taxes will go up by 3.07%. So you'll see the proposed fiscal year 19 tax levy increases, and without giving the school system directly, our public school system, I want to keep emphasizing that because we are giving over 2% to all our education expenses, taxes will still go up by over 3%. Now, the discussion is going to happen, I think, a lot in Subcommittee, is what if we give them 1%, 1.5%, or 2%? What is the impact on the town budget, and what are the impacts on the tax rates? I think this is going to be where a lot of discussion occurs in the Subcommittee about how much more we can do for education in spite of the fact that we got very little or almost no aid from the state in this year's budget, right? So if we were to do a 1% budget, it would increase the school budget by $267,867. Of course, as you increase the amount we give them, it increases the tax levy, so the tax levy then would go up to $21,404,758, and the tax increase on a 1% spending increase would be 4.39%. Same thing, if we look at what we do if we go up by 1.5%, the spending would go up $401,801, and it would end up raising taxes by 5.06%. And then going to 2%, you would raise and give the schools an additional $535,735. Of course, the tax levy goes all the way up to $21,672,626, and that would result in a 5.72 tax increase on the citizens of town. You can see, these are troubling numbers, and they're going to be difficult numbers. And this, I want to stress really carefully, this is after new growth, okay? It's really important, after new growth. That means that as the town expands, as there's new development in town, that actually reduces our tax increases, right? Because now the growth is spread out among more businesses, more residents, so these numbers are after new growth. Now, again, this will go to Subcommittee, and Subcommittee will talk about this, and it's one of the things that we're going to have to talk about. Now, I broke it down into different slides so you can see the direct impact of each of these proposals. I think it's important you guys actually understand what happens, given various scenarios. The sheet that's upper, the slide that's above you now is with a 0% increase or a level-funded budget. You'll see that the levy is $21,136,891 for 19. The tax levy in 18 was $20,237,501. The increase in the tax levy is 899,390, or about 4.44%. Now, as you reduce, you'll see that line in red is less new growth. You subtract the new growth, and the taxes are increased by 3.07%. Now, I want you to note on the left-hand side, that $711,000, that's available taxation that we can do, or available levy that we can do. As we increase any money we give to the school, that number, you're going to see it start decreasing, okay? So this is the ability of the Town Council to spend additional funds within our, within Proposition 2.5. Again, this is the same thing at the 1% increase. I'm not going to read through all the numbers, but you'll get the general idea. It goes up first, 5.77% tax rate would increase. After new growth, it increases taxes by 4.39%, and this effectively would give our school system a 1% increase. The same thing, again, we're going to do the same kind of concept, is if we give them a 1.5% increase, the gross increase- a 1.5% increase, the gross increase, the projected tax levy would be $1,301,191, a 6.43% increase, and you'll see, if again, if you take away new growth, it comes to $1,231,38, or a 5.06% tax increase. And you'll note that on the left-hand side, your excess levy capacity is decreasing, and once you use that levy capacity, you can't use it again, it's gone. So it decreases our ability to do anything else once we get through this budget year if we use all of that levy limit. Now, this is the revenues, and you'll see that, of course, there's the increase in the first line, the property tax levy, this is again at the 0% or level funded school budget, and you'll see, you'll see the new growth in the third line going up, it's at 278, that's actually a decrease from last year, and the reason for that is that we had some solar projects that went on last year, or again, I keep saying last year, it's the current year that we're in, we don't know for sure what we're going to have in this year, so the assessor has given this number as new growth, we hope it will be a little bit better, but that's the number that we think is reasonable to go by. If you look at the Cherry Street receipts, that's what we talked about, the negative $342,950. You get on a little further, you'll see the charter school reimbursement, the $478,000, that's a huge impact, and at the end of the, the total revenues only increased by .89%. So we're not looking at big revenues to tax people on, again, it's where the money going, I think, is the key factor in this budget. Again, this is a model on the expense side of the budget, and you can see the numbers in here as well, you see the trace assessment, I told you a little bit about the trace assessment in line, it's about four, it goes from $908,140 to $1,26375, or 13% increase, you see that as a big number, and you get on to the insurances, that's all the different insurances that the town pays that are sort of fixed costs, there's not a heck of a lot we can do with those, they come in what they come in, and they come in, you'll see the increases, $202,709, or about 4.56%. Debt, if you look at debt, debt actually decreases a little bit for the town, decreases by three, a little over 3.5%. And the Southbridge Public Schools, again, this is reflective of a no increase or a level funded budget, the expense side of the budget goes up by .89 of a percent. So again, very small numbers, but a big impact because of the fact of where the money's going, and the lack of state revenues. This is where I talk about my department heads in the different various town departments, and you're going to see at the end of this, there's only a 1.32% increase in all the town departments, and even that 1.32 is really made up of increased labor costs as a result of union contracts. This is where I talk about the budgets are all level funded, there's no real increases in any of our town budgets, and we keep asking them, I think this is the fourth year in a row where we ask them to do more with less, and we don't give them any increases. We've made some adjustments, particularly in the police department, but in effect, this is, again, kind of, we're going backwards in real dollars. Anytime you keep a budget flat, electricity, different costs go up, it really means that departments are taking cuts in other areas, and they really have to kind of go through their budgets every day and figure out how they can make ends meet to get through the budget year, so it's really, really challenging. You're going to see some big increases in certain departments, they look big in terms of percentage, the elections, there's more elections this year, so you'll see it went up 101%, but it's only, the dollars are small, which is what makes a big increase, but we have our elections, we have to fund those elections, so you'll see the big increase. Personnel is things like Medicare costs and sick time buyback, kind of fixed contractual things that we have to do. The other thing you'll see is the health department, there's a negative 11% decrease, we all recognize that the landfill is going to be closing in half a year, at the end of December, so there's some reductions in that department as a result of the landfill closing. And again, you really have to look at that bottom total number, which is really the thing, is that year after year after year, we keep funding our departments at the bare, bare minimum and trying to protect all the services that these departments do, and it's very, very difficult to keep doing this every year, and again, I can't tell you how much I appreciate department heads somehow managing to do this time and time again. Now, some expenses are beyond our control, you know, for instance, you have a union contract, you have to pay a certain amount once you negotiate it, these expenses are a little bit different, but they're sort of handed to us, they don't give us an option, and that's group health and life insurance, you don't get to ask them for a discount, I mean, we negotiate this every so often, but the bottom line is, the cost of health insurance, like everybody else in the country, you kind of get, whatever the premium goes up, you have to deal with it, it's not something we can really do a heck of a lot about. Same thing for property and casualty insurance, workers' comp, unemployment stayed pretty flat, and retirement money, these are all fixed costs, that really, the town council or I, we really don't have any choice, we have to pay the bills, they are what they are, and we have to deal with them. Now, this is important to me, and this is what I talk about with our departments, town departments, the town must invest in general town services provided by individual departments. Crisis management has not allowed the town to increase funding beyond contractual requirements, this will result in reduced services to the community. Again, there's only so long you can keep giving zeros to all the town departments and expect them to give you the same services that we had the year before, and this is really becoming more and more concerning, because the year before I came, they were told to give zero, the three years I've been here now, they're told to give zero. This is something we're going to have to deal with soon, or we're going to really see a damaging impact to the services that are currently being provided to the town. Police and Fire Department, this is an issue that I've been talking about a lot, this is an issue of public safety, and one of the recommendations that I had this year, and the police and fire chief had this year, we spent a lot of time looking at something called central dispatch, and that's combining our police and fire dispatches into one unit. The cost of that nets out at about $125,000, and it was one of the big priorities of mine to bring that forward this year, and I actually had it in the budget, but then as the school issue played out and we looked at the impact of the school budget, those few things that I wanted to put in this year's budget to improve the departments, it came out. Now, I want to be really clear, we've improved public safety in the last couple of years dramatically, we've hired two new police officers in the last couple of years to improve public safety, and we actually hired one more full-time dispatcher. So we are making improvements, but they're not as fast as we would like, and frankly, if I had money in the town budget, this is one of the areas that I have consistently supported to improve public safety, but again, I just, we just don't have $125,000 to implement this, given the problems that we're having in the school system. Again, if we had more state aid and we could handle the school system through more state aid, this would be something that I'd be recommending on the town side, but as of right now, it is not in the budget. Same problem with DPW, we talk a lot about, and the council talks to me a lot about the field conditions in town, and we stretch our DPW department extremely thin, and again, keep asking them to do more and more and more, and we don't give them any money. This is the area where I was hoping to put in two new part-timers, just for the summer season to better maintain our parks, allow our DPW guys to work on streets and other things, and to have a couple of part-timers that were not benefited employees to just help, you know, better maintain the grass and the fields, it can be better conditioned. This was in the budget, this got killed and taken out of the budget because I just don't have the money. But it's something we need to deal with in order to keep our DPW department operating at its full efficiency, and frankly, do a better job of maintaining those areas that maybe aren't quite as important, but, you know, because DPW has to deal with road issues, but they're important to the community to make sure that our parks are safe, that we have a great place for our children to play, so we've got to deal with those issues. This is, again, I'm not going to keep repeating this, but additional funding to all town departments, this was the year that I had hoped we were going to be doing that, but then the school, you know, again, it's crisis after crisis, in '17 we had the free cash crisis, in '18 we had the Casella crisis, now we have the school crisis, very difficult to fund the departments to where they should be, but at some point, we got to get through these crises and be able to help our other town departments. One other issue that this budget doesn't provide for yet is something called OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is something that we, in the past, have used Casella money for, and we still may do that, it's something that me and Karen are now analyzing to see if there's a potential for that, but right now, it's not in the budget, it's about $250,000 that we've used Casella money in last year, I think we have got about $1 million in a trust account for other post-employment benefits. That puts us ahead, quite frankly, of a lot of other towns that have zero for this issue, and basically what this is, is that when employees retire, you have to pay the cost of their health insurance benefits, and the state is making us put money aside to do that instead of funding it every year out of an operating budget. So that's what we're doing, we're a million dollars to the plus on this compared to other towns, but it's something we need to continue to do every year, and it's something that we're still analyzing, but as of right now, it's not into the budget. Free cash and long-term capital improvement plan, we are going to be bringing soon to the town council and to the public, the six-year capital improvement plan, and you'll see, once again, we're going to use free cash to try to meet some of our long-term capital improvement needs. Specifically here, we have a lot of issues with town buildings, and we've taken a long look, I've worked a lot with Heather Blakely, our DPW director, to look at our town buildings and see what we can do to fix some of the things that have been identified in our facilities management plan, so we're trying to do as much as we can to maintain our current town facilities, because those are our assets, and we want to make sure that our assets stay in place. So you're going to see, when we do our free cash and long-term capital plan, us moving in that direction. Couple of issues that we talk about every year, and then Councilor Steve's is always really important on this issue, and I can't agree with him more, just wish we had some money, is the issue of town roads and infrastructure. We still need to get money for that issue, and it's something we have to think about, but also, we are considering building a new firehouse in town, and that's going to require potentially, if voters approve it, that could be a million dollars of bonding and new debt service. So again, it's one of those things, is where do you put your resources, and it's going to be a very difficult decision of town council how to move forward on those issues as well. So this is some, pretty much sums up our town budget for fiscal year 19, it's a reasonable budget, it doesn't have the kind of growth opportunities that I would like it to have, and I'm sure the town council, but it deals with our problems, is really what it deals with, and I think it sets a good framework for our discussions in the town council's subcommittees. I want to let council know how much I appreciate the work they're going to be doing in subcommittee, and I'll do everything I can to answer any questions or provide any additional information to councils that they need, and we'll hopefully work as a team to ensure that we get a budget that meets all the needs of the people of Southbridge. With that, I thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. All right, we're going to move on, agenda item... Make sure we're here in order. Agenda item number 17 is vote to ratify the pilot agreement between TOS Solar One LLC and the town of Southbridge for the assessment and payment of personal property taxes on Gulfwood Road as it relates to a 46.38 kilowatt photovoltaic power... Can we be clear on the number before I finish the motion?
Yeah, I see a typo on the number, instead of 46.38 kilowatts, it should be 646.38 kilowatts.
Okay, 646.38.
Six forty-six.
It's missing the six.
I caught that one when it went through subcommittee.
Okay, thank you.
Never got corrected.
I wasn't there, so I didn't see that one.
So moved.
Let me finish. Okay, 646.38 photovoltaic power plant system.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Steve.
That was one of the items on GenGov on March 21st, so what we did is that Will talked about it and noted that this came under Master General law Chapter 59, Section 38, I think it was H, you said, allows pilots for taxes like this, and they help stabilize what's expected by both town and company. He said he's seen solar firms without such pilots appeal their taxes and win in court, even getting themselves declared tax-free, so this is actually beneficial for the town. However, the deal is higher than what towns will usually get, and that figure is probably going to fall in their future since the state law has changed, and this is going to be probably the last one we'll be able to get under what's called the old SREC II program, whereas the current program, which is called SMART, provides for lower incentives. So he mentioned that these payments are front-loaded, the planning board did require the developer to set aside money for decommissioning the facility in 20 years, the property is actually Santos-owned property off of Gulfwood Road, and Councilor Nash recommended ratifying the agreement, and it passed 4-0.
Any questions, comments? Everybody's good? All those in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous. Agenda item 18, vote to ratify the pilot agreement between TOS Solar Two LLC and the town of Southbridge for the assessment and payment of personal property taxes on Gulfwood Road as it relates to a 1,000...
In this case, the amount is correct, but it is not on Gulfwood Road, it is on Charlton Street.
Yes.
Let's try that again. Vote to ratify the pilot agreement between TOS Solar Two LLC and the town of Southbridge for the assessment and payment of personal property taxes on Charlton Street as it relates to a 1,340.64 kilowatt photovoltaic power plant system.
So moved.
Okay, Councilor Steve.
And that was also on this agenda, we basically talked about the previous one and this one more or less together, so a lot of stuff that Will said about that one applied to this too. And in this case, it's an identical language for the same, for the deal, it's pretty much identical language for all of the deals that we've had in the last couple of months, isn't it, Will? Yeah. And this is also on Santos-owned land, and the total in payments, however, is $560,592 over 20 years, whereas the other one is $270,285, and we recommended, we recommended that also unanimously.
Okay, any questions on this? All those in favor? Unanimous. Agenda item number 19, vote to authorize the town manager to execute the acceptance of property located at 80 Hamilton Street, parcel number 035-158-00001, on behalf of the town council, and that said acceptance be recorded to the Worcester Registry of Deeds.
So moved.
Okay, discussion on this?
I have this.
Oops.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Steve's is going to...
Oh.
It's on the item.
It was on the same agenda. So, let's see, Andy mentioned that he's been chasing this property since 2013, they live in Florida, it's been vacant a couple of years, and he recently had a contempt of court order against them, the owner recently did talk to him regarding their options, and he's encouraging transferring ownership before foreclosure concludes, which is already in the process in treasurer's office, they owe about $50,000 in taxes and interest, and it's been unpaid for seven or eight years. Andy said that he would like to put out, possibly put out an RFQ to see if someone's willing to rehab the building, but expects demolition is probable, which would cost 40 to 55 grand because of the asbestos siding. The lot might be big enough for a buyer to rebuild under the proposed new zoning bylaws, but it's not currently, because we're looking at changing the, the way we're looking at the zoning bylaws, it currently is 22.5, if I remember correctly, and we're looking at changing it down to 10,000 square feet, and if so, it's like 11,000 or so, so it would fit. It could also be possibly sold for parking for a nearby owner or some other similar use. Ron mentioned that he's been inside with the police since he has seen water leak damage and evidence of its use as a drug shooting gallery. A resident, Sophie Williams, raised concerns that leaving it up as it is now might encourage residents to rent nearby buildings, and Councilor Nash noted that it'll cost, that it'll cost more than 40 grand to demo the building, whereas the town will likely only recoup maybe 10 grand from sale. So we've been observing a lot of these blight demo costs, but of course, unfortunately, it's kind of a catch-22, because, you know, either we do it or we have half falling apart buildings downtown, so. And Ms. Fornier noted that the money will go into the demolition revolving fund if it actually goes through, and we also unanimously approve this one.
Councilor Mina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did bring up, I'm really happy to see this on the agenda, and I was really happy to see it, I had multiple calls on 80 Hamilton Street over the last few years in regards to abandonment issues and just the upkeep and everything, so I did bring up that if we do adopt to take this, if we vote yes on this, I ask, is there any way we can just clean up the outside of the property a little bit, get rid of the bushes, there's businesses and homes on that street, and it's that one corner right there, just, it just makes the whole street look awful, and it's just been years they've been trying to get that cleaned up. So if that would be possible, that would be great, and it would just, I mean, I'm not asking you to paint the building or put new windows in, I'm asking you just to clean brush up and mow it, that's all.
Well, if the town owns it, then again, maybe Councilor Nash, we go out with the mowers and weed whackers and take care of that, as soon as the grass grows.
As long as it's after May 19.
If the town owns it. Okay, I'll sit, there anybody else in this item? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Does this one... Is this required two votes? If not. Agenda item number 20, vote to approve expenditures of snow and ice removal in excess of available appropriations pursuant to Master General law Chapter 44, Section 31D for up to $95,000 with $45,000 allocated for snow and ice over time, count number 495.4131, and $50,000 for snow and ice control, account 495.5290. Before we take this up, I have to ask, it's not listed here, maybe Karen would know, or you might know, Mr. Town Manager, because I've asked you about this, is that a 2/3ths on the appropriation for snow and ice? Do you know?
I'm not sure. Karen?
Yes, I did ask.
Karen, is this a 2/3ths? Karen, is there a two-thirds requirement for just the authorization? It's not really a vote for money, but it's just a, to authorize the $95,000 for snow and ice?
That's just a majority? I'm just seeming to remember there's something that comes up that requires more, but...
The next one's two-thirds, though.
Okay. It's to approve the expenditure, yeah. Okay, so we're not taking the money, right? Okay, just want to make sure before we move forward. Thank you. Okay. All right, then. So...
That was on...
Do we have a motion?
That was on, oh, so moved. Second. That was, that was on the DPW subcommittee minutes, which Council of the Chiefs is not here, but I was taking the minutes, so. Let's see. Okay, Heather said that this was a routine allocation to allow overspending. We do it pretty much every year these days, because the budget line's already been exhausted. She tried to estimate enough to cover at least one more storm beyond the one that was for that evening, plus a little extra for salt and so forth. So, it's now, at that time, it was 32,000 over budget, if I understood it correctly, and she was originally asking about 125K, but working with, working with Karen, she brought it down to 95,000. And they'll come back to, when winter's over, to finalize the actual expenses, and that's when we'll actually vote for the transfer of funds to actually fund them. And also, I just wanted to point out that if you look at the figures that we passed around there that day with the budget, the figures that we've seen over the last several years, at the moment, our current spend, expenses for, for this year have been 432,300. We budgeted 400,000, as we have for several years, and it's been pretty much, it's been above 400,000 every year except fiscal 2016, so. And now it's just barely under. Just, so it's... Mother Nature. What can you do?
Any questions? I can't say that we did. I know sometimes people are concerned about the amount we've budgeted as not being enough, and I know that we had changed this, because at one time it was only 200,000, and every year we were moving like 300,000 around. So, we've gone up to the four, I believe, with Town Manager Pecos, and so now we're still above. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, anyone else? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Agenda item 21, vote to appropriate $54,916.70 from water retained earnings to project number 6457, new roof at water treatment plant, to cover additional costs associated with the water treatment building roof repair.
So moved.
Madam Chair, I have a question before I second.
Okay.
I'm, is that I think this does require two-thirds, because that's a stabilization fund.
Where is...
Karen? There she is. Does this require two-thirds, Karen? I think it's, because it's a stabilization fund.
No, this money is coming from the water retained earnings, which just requires a majority. It's not in the stabilization.
It isn't considered a stabilization for the water department? I thought it was.
No, it would need to be transferred to a stabilization. We haven't done that yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask again. Mr. Town Manager, I'd like you to review the agenda before we get it, before I get it even, so that you know that these, which you've been at these meetings, to make sure if it's a two-thirds vote or not. Please ask those questions, because it's difficult up here at times. Thank you. All right, do we have a second?
Oh, second, yes.
Okay, any questions on this particular item or information from the DPW minutes?
There it is. Yeah, we talked about that at some length, actually. Heather mentioned that the council had approved this back in June of 2017, appropriating $300,000 for this project, but the cost came in much higher than expected when she went to bid. So, she went out to do a second round, a second round of bidding. They were still higher by the $54,916 and change. At the time, she thought she'd be able to cover the difference in the budget from the Capital Reserve, but since it started out as a retained earnings project, she, she worked with Karen, who recommended keeping it as retained earnings spending, where there's about $2 million in retained earnings now. Heather mentioned that the issue is that labor town, it turned out to be more costly than the projections from the firms who were doing the estimations, which were the roofing supplier and the architect. Fortunately, we're getting the supplies themselves from the state bid, so that's not covered by this particular appropriation. This just, just covers labor. So, and the way it's going to work out is that the project seeks to install a new roof atop the existing one, which is not properly attached to the building, and to use basically very long screws to go straight through the old roof from the new roof to the, to the fittings that'll hold it in place, because it was never properly attached. That way, they'll, they'll actually have a warranty on the roof, since the company no longer exists that did the first job in the first place. And we, we, our DPW unanimously approved doing this, too.
I do have a question. I was not here, and I'm reading the backup material on that in what I was doing so. I'm a little confused. This Garland Company in January that's on the state bid list gives us an estimate. The estimates are not right. It's more money. Why, I mean, is there nobody responsible for giving us inaccurate information? I mean, it just seems like there should be.
Okay, so Garland is the material representative for the product, not the labor part of it. They gave us an estimate to the best of their ability. I'm not sure, Heather, I'm sure reached out to a variety of people to get an estimate. They were the ones that gave her an estimate. They missed a significant amount of the labor costs in that estimate, and we didn't find that out until we actually went out to bid, that that cost was too high. So, after it was put out to bid, as my understanding, they, the bid came in too high. They ended up rebidding the project, and the bid came in lower, but it's still, I believe, approximately 54,000 over the money that was allocated for this. But Heather used the company she thought best, and they did not give as accurate estimate as we'd like, but frankly, that's what estimates are. Sometimes they're higher than we want, sometimes they're lower than we want, but in this case, it obviously was underestimated.
I'll just point out that it specifically says in her memo, too, that the estimated error by Garland, which left out 15% of the metal panels when calculating labor costs, left out 15% of the metal panels needed for the job. That's not just leaving out, the materials didn't raise in price, they left out 15% of the metal needs. That's a different thing than the metal costs going up.
Again, it's a, I think it's a combination of both. I think, and I got a word of guys here, but I think the biggest chunk of it, my understanding, was it was labor costs, but there was also some metal framing, there were some metal parts that were also not included. So, it was a combination, more labor, but also some materials as well, if that's the way I understand. Is that correct?
Right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that there wasn't labor. I see that. It's in the memo that you must have. I'm saying that 15% was the leaving out of the metal panels themselves. That, to me, seems, those people should not be on the state bid list if they can't actually calculate how much product you need properly. That's a large amount of product. I'm just saying. I'm making a point, and it's just...
Say, Council, Madam Chairman, as I recall from the discussion we had with Heather, the issue actually, if, if I understood it properly, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that these panels are already on the building. They're part of our building now. It's not that they needed more panels to do the job. It's that they had, it's, some issue had to do with the labor working with the panels and the way they're set up on the building to attach the roof to those areas of the panels. I'm not, I'm not an architect or an engineer, so I honestly didn't understand exactly what she said. I know, I saw that, too.
And it was specific to saying that there was an estimating error, so maybe Garland didn't get on the roof and count the panels right.
That's possibly true. I don't know exactly what it was, but yes.
That bothers me that there was that large of an estimating error to the bid.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about that.
The labor, I can understand. Labor costs change. I get that. I'm, you know, business is business, but that just bothers me that from a state bid list, which the state is supposed to protect us in a lot of ways, that's why you're on the state bid list, to assure that these things don't happen. So, it kind of bothers me. Just pointing it out. Thank you.
My final question out to you. Is there, is there any way to track these kinds of contractors on the state bid list, and what kind of a reputation they have as terms of accuracy and things like that? Does the state have a website or anything like that?
So, Garland's a consultant that the town uses, and they helped us bid. The bids actually came from independent roofing contractors.
Okay.
So, when we came to council for the 300,000 out of retained earnings, that was based on a, basically a rudimentary estimate.
Right.
In hindsight, we probably would have come to council once we had our quotes, but due to the nature of the roof of the treatment plant, we wanted to get the ball rolling for getting money out of retained earnings for this project. So, Garland themselves isn't the contractor that's doing the work.
Yeah, I know that.
They're, they're the supplier, and they helped us bid out the labor
Right.
to the, to the independent contractors themselves to do the roof work.
Yeah, I understood that. What I was asking is, is since they, since they made an estimate that is so far off, is there any, any way that that gets tracked by the state bid list so that, so that we could go online going, going forward and say, oh, by the way, this company has had these issues and blah, 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 in terms of estimating or work or whatever?
That's an excellent question.
I remember there was talk about doing that years ago, and I don't know if it ever went anywhere. Not necessarily from us, but at the state level.
I don't have the answer to that. I'm sorry.
Okay. It would be nice to know if there was a website.
It was, I'll bring it up with Heather and Matt when they're back.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Council?
Maybe to Council Steve's, maybe like if you go on the Better Business Bureau or something, sometimes you can find the ratings.
In general.
Yelp, just Google the company. I mean, they, they might be able to, the internet might be able to help you.
It'll probably help some, yeah.
Thank you. All set, Councils? Council Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little quick note, because he didn't identify himself. That was Steve Gregoire of Whitewater.
Oh, sorry.
Our contractor. Steve is the Water Division Manager for the town of Southbridge.
Right, so this really isn't even his full... This is not him. This is...
Right, but thank you for coming up and speaking.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate that. For being knowledgeable on that one. Okay, any other questions or comments? Obviously, it's something that has been discussed in subcommittees. All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Unfortunately.
Unanimous, motion carries. Okay, next item 22, vote to transfer, vote to approve the transfer of the amount of $7,425 from project 8022 Cemetery Sale of Lots account to DPW Cemetery Materials and Supplies account for the purchase of a trench box.
So moved. Second.
Let us know about the trench box.
That was also on DPW's agenda. In this case, I guess Heather mentioned that this came up during a staff hydraulics license training class, where they were renewing their licenses, and the state revealed that, well, that the governor recently signed a bill saying that the, that these laws, the OSHA laws now clarifying that the OSHA laws now apply to public workers. It was always under the assumption that municipal workers were exempt, but they weren't, unfortunately. In this case, the issue regarding grave digging, that staff is routinely has to go down into the grave to smooth out the bottom, they've been recently using a water department trench box, but Heather said that she didn't like having to transfer the thing between, back and forth between sites, especially if the water department needs it on that given day. So, and if somebody ever got hurt, the town could be in serious trouble from OSHA and other, other issues. Councilor Manna asked why nobody had known, and Heather mentioned that for years it was assumed that the municipal services were exempt, although she had known that... Oh, had she known that there was no trench box previously, she'd been, would have been upset, too. Stephen Lazo mentioned that he's done, done some grave digging, and that sometimes has run into a ledge, which would be especially dangerous without a trench box. So, that was also unanimously recommended.
Any questions? Council Nash?
Just a quick clarification, too. I don't know, I don't know that it was in the minutes for that meeting, Councilor Steve's, but I do recall that part of the discussion that alluded to the need for this trench box was that the one they were using on loan from the water department wasn't the proper dimensions.
Okay, I, I, I remember that, but I didn't put it in my notes, but that's a good thing to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Motion carries, five. Now, on the next items, item number 23 through 33, items number 23 through 33 are votes for approval of transfers. This is in regard to some of the discussion we've had of late, that all transfers, according to charter, are supposed to come through council. These were brought into subcommittee and discussed thoroughly. What I would like to do on these, as we have done at times on appointments, that come, you know, multiple appointments for the same, I would like to read all the items, and that we move to approve the transfers all as one, unless someone has an objection. You can certainly ask questions on any of them. I just think it would be more expedient and certainly proper to either decide that we want all the approvals or not. So, Council Steve's?
Just to clarify, that's exactly how we, we talked about it, and that's how we approve them in subcommittee, as a lump sum, so.
All right, so I will read them, and then you'll have an opportunity to make that motion to approve them, and then we'll go from there. All right. Number 23, vote to transfer $50 from DPW Engineering Supplies account to DPW Dues, Subscriptions, and Periodicals account. 24, vote to transfer $650 from DPW Maintenance on Streets, Grounds account to DPW Storm Sewers and Culverts account. 25, vote to transfer $1,425 from Water Electricity account to Water Data Processing account. Number 26, vote to approve, transfer of $460.80 from DPW Maintenance on Streets, Grounds account to DPW Safety Supplies account. Number 27, vote to approve the transfer of $600 from DPW Water and Sewer Irrigation account to DPW Water and Sewer Town Hall account. Agenda item 27, vote to approve the transfer of $4,700 from DPW Repair and Maintenance of Equipment account to DPW Maintenance and Improvements of Building, DPW account. Number 29, vote to approve the transfer of $3,000 from DPW Signs and Posts account to DPW Storm Sewers and Culverts account. Agenda item 30, vote to approve the transfer of $7,000 from Sewer Maintenance Operating Budget account to Sewer Testing and Evaluation account. Agenda item 31, vote to transfer 700, approve the transfer of $700 from Sewer Maintenance Operating Budget account to Sewer Data Processing account. Agenda item 32, vote to approve the transfer request of $1,764.78 from General Insurance from Workers Compensation account to Unemployment account, and $2,356 from Deductible Liability account to Unemployment account. And the last one, oops, number 33, three pages here, vote to transfer, vote to approve the transfer from Assessors Department, the amount of $14.01 for Mileage on Instate Travel account to Office Supplies account.
So moved.
Okay, Council Steve's, you had some.
Okay, I don't know. Do you want me to quickly summarize each of those items?
I think we just need to know if there are questions on each of these items.
Okay, the only thing, I would think, just from, for the sake of the way we discussed it at GenGov, the last two were GenGov items, everything else was DPW items. The way we discuss it, I think that the insurance thing might, I don't know if it required, if anybody has any questions, I have the minutes for those. It's, it's a little bit more complicated than it, than it looks, but everything else is pretty simple, pretty simple, so. If you guys want to do them all together, that's fine with me. If anybody needs questions, I can answer them usually.
Do we have specific questions, or do you, would you like to talk about the two general government items? It's totally up to you. Your call.
Okay, the unemployment transfer item, that was number 32. The issue there was that Karen and Mindy had come forward to describe this as a situation where the town denied unemployment to a terminated employee, but the person later, if I understood, person later claimed it as from another town in Southbridge, which was within 24-month lookback period, so we basically have to pay it anyway. How long that will go will remain to be determined, but it could be up to, up to 18 more months. They come forward seeking a transfer to cover one, the current, I guess it was the current month, received an additional bill shortly after they had requested the initial transfer, and state law charging interest, charges, starts charging interest, we don't pay it within a specific timeframe, which in this case is by April 17th. So, instead of, instead of just doing one month, we thought it made sense to do both months, and that's why you've got two, but, but they wanted to pull it from two different accounts. That's why, that's why it comes from two different accounts, for, for a total of $4,120.78. And Mindy mentioned that if she needs another transfer later, she'll try to project it through the end of the year, so that we can set funds aside and maybe take it from council reserve. We were throwing that around, but we'll see if that happens. And if I, I don't remember the exact figure here, but the total, I think that the claim was somewhere in the $7,000 range, but I, I forgot to put it in here, so.
I'm not sure if people realize with unemployment, so if we, we deny, and it goes off, and somebody gets another job, but then they get laid off again, the state allows them to come back to us as the previous employer
Yeah.
to pay that unemployment claim.
Yeah.
It just, it's not a very good system, but unfortunately, we are the victim of that, and we should get that changed. Talk to your legislators. Okay, anybody else on this item, or on these items? I guess I would ask the town manager, I am, I was not here at that meeting, so the equipment, the repair, number 28, the $4,700, can you explain the DPW Repair and Maintenance Equipment account needing to go to the Improvements of Building account? Do you know what that improvement of building is?
I don't remember what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, I can answer that. It's, what Heather said is that this is to pay future contractual costs regarding heating and other, heat and other building-related issues, since the account's been depleted by the hazardous gas line repairs of a DPW. The originating accounts had extra, had extra money, because inspections found no problems with cranes and other equipment, so she didn't, she didn't need any money to put aside for those, so she decided to transfer to this, too.
And Mr. Town Manager, on these transfers, my belief, my understanding, because this is a whole new, what we're trying to do here, be transparent, these transfers come to you for signature first, don't they, before they come? Don't, doesn't the request come from the department head, and then you have to sign the transfers?
The transfers come from the department, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right. Any other questions?
If you're curious about the $7,000 one, that's, that just simply covers lab sampling for the NIPD's department.
Yeah, that one I wasn't too worried about. I knew the background. Okay. I just wasn't able to be here for that meeting, so. All right, seeing nothing else, all those in favor of approving the transfers request? It is unanimous. Motions carry, all the way down to 33. All right, last page. And this is code bylaws. Yeah, that's a five, the right, oh, shoot. Are we going to want to... We had this discussion last time. I'm trying to remember the numbers.
Did you do 33? Did you catch 33?
Yep. Yep, we cut 33. Right through 33, 10 items. Well, let's do the reading here. Proposed amendments to the Code of Bylaws, Town of Southbridge, Section 3-204 Municipal Building Committee as follows. 3-204.1 Establishment: There shall be a municipal building committee, known as the NBC, specific to each municipal building project, appointed by the town manager, subject to confirmation by the town council, to consist of seven members, six members of an NBC, keep getting that N, an NBC shall be appointed by the town manager. In making appointments to an NBC, the town manager shall seek to include in its membership an engineer, an architect, an attorney, and a person representing the building and construction trades. The seventh member of a municipal building committee shall be appointed by the school committee if the project is school-related. In all other cases, a person related to the proposed project shall be recommended by the relative department head to the town manager for appointment and confirmed by the town council. An example would be a project related to the fire station, a member of the fire department shall be recommended by the fire chief. And then, as it says above. And that's Charter, Section 4, 3-1 and 4, 3-3-2. Under 3-204.2 Authorities and Responsibilities: Whenever any construction or reconstruction of a building or other facility is authorized, a municipal building committee shall be responsible for all work in connection therewith, including site planning, preliminary architectural plans and drawings, detailed architectural drawings and plans, all bid documents and construction supervision, subject to the designer selection procedures adopted by the town council in compliance with Mass. General Law Chapter 7(c), Sections 44 through 57, known as the Designer Selection Law. The municipal building committee shall meet regularly with the town manager to discuss its ongoing work program and to provide for an orderly interface and other municipal entities with meetings subject to the open meeting law. And this is the third and final reading, 3/26/18. So this has been read as it was amended last meeting, just to be clear. There was a typo on one of the, we had left that example, and it, that got changed, so it has been now officially read as it was amended and is in place. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I thought I heard you read it the way I would have liked it to have been read.
With the ands?
Well, not just that, but in 3-204-1, two-thirds of the way down, there's a word that's three or four over next to recommended by the relative, that should be relevant, I would think.
I was gonna say that, too.
And I didn't catch it until you read it.
Oh.
So I would like to see that word read relevant.
Same here.
Thank you.
That's a, it's probably just a typo. I can check back.
I did check on the original version and on the one that was provided tonight, and they both said relative. Thank you.
Okay.
Although the minutes don't say, don't say relative at all, actually.
Right.
So.
All right. So we know it's relevant, recommended by the relevant head of, relevant department head.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're very clear on the relevant part. All right. And there were a couple of just and situations that I read. We'll make sure it's very clear when it's imported. All right, so, third and final reading. I'm just, I get a little bit off on the bylaws, whether it's a five or a six.
For zoning, it's, for zoning, it's two-thirds.
Yeah, for this, it's five. Okay. That's why I did it. Yep. Thank you for reminding me, Counselor Steves. Or Vice Chair Steves. Agenda item number 35. Vote to ratify the amendment to the Code of Bylaws, Town of Southbridge, Section 3-204 Municipal Building Committee, Section 3-204.1 and 3-204.2, as written above and read first on 2/26/18, second reading on 3/12/18, and this and third final reading on 3/26/18.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any concerns, questions, comments on anything we've done here? Nobody, everybody's good with it. All right. All those in favor of the change? It is unanimous. Motion carries. And we now have an appropriate NBC notification in our Code of Bylaws, and so we can appropriately make sure the fire department's all set. All right. Number 36. Okay, I did my minute. Number 36 is to discuss the receipt of an open meeting law violation, which we noted that we would discuss at the last meeting, when it was brought to the attention that we had received it by Counselor O'Clair in regard to Counselor DePietro. Now, Counselor O'Clair is not here this evening, and neither is Counselor DePietro. Both let me know, Counselor DePietro let me know that he had had a mishap and could not be here about 4 o'clock today, and Counselor O'Clair contacted me at close to 6:30, and we discussed whether or not she wanted this to be handled tonight. I told her I was happy to discuss it tonight and discuss it again. I will note that on her, so we received the open meeting law complaint dated, now, that's where the problem comes in, dated 3/12/17, so I would ask that she will amend that and fix that up so that we can have the proper complaint. And normally, I handed everybody out information, which we should have all had anyway in this regard. Let me scrub my sheet. Open meeting law, it's right in your open meeting law packet that you would have gotten at some point. And basically, the, on page 18 of the open meeting laws, step two on public body response allows the public body to have 14 business days from the date of receipt to meet and review the complaint's allegations and take any remedial action if appropriate, notify the complainant of the remedial action, and forward a copy of the complaint and the description of the remedial action to the AG's office. So I, she said, as I commented, I have no problem talking about this today because I think people may want to know about it, and then we certainly can bring it back up and talk about it in two weeks when she's here, if that's what she would like to do. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just a couple things. She puts in her.
Well, I want to read the complaint, if I may, Counselor Manna, please, and then you can.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah. Well, no, let me, let me get to the complaint, and then we'll go. I thought maybe you had something. Yes, absolutely. You'll be first.
Because it's the body of the complaint.
I understand completely. Okay, so let's just read this formal complaint. It came from Kristen O'Clair, 51 North Street in Southbridge, and the name of the public body is us, the town council. The alleged person who committed the violation is Mark DePietro, and the date of the alleged violation is March 7, 2018. Her comments. This counselor has a history of sending deliberation and opinions over email. After being warned in December 17 on, 17, on 3/7/18, Counselor Mark DePietro dropped off a letter to our town manager's office addressed to council. In the letter, it discussed his opinions and possible courses of action regarding an agenda item that was discussed the evening before on 3/6/18 in a joint DPW Subcommittee-Town Council meeting, where a quorum of both bodies were present. This letter was sent via electronic communication from an employee at the town hall to the entire town council and to quorum of the DPW Subcommittee. These are deliberations and opinions that belong in an open meeting, not in an email to council and department heads. It is my opinion that the extra step of delivering the letter to the town hall was to intentionally circumvent open meeting law by having a third party, the administration and the manager's office, instructed to send the note out to council. This is my opinion due to previous warning and the additional steps of creating a notice rather than emailing directly, although both are blatant attempts of deliberating outside of a public meeting where the content was discussed at length by a quorum of counselors present. And then she notes further down, more text, "As a member of this public body, I've noticed a recurring trend of certain counselors sending emails to deliberate outside of open meeting. I would like very clear clarification to these members going forward that these emails are in violation of open meeting law and are not conducive to open and transparent government." So the complainant is saying that she would like this to be discussed and made it clear. So in regard to this, I also gave you, on the other side of the paper, I printed out what constitutes deliberation. I, I'll let you know what I've done. I had extensive conversation with Counselor DePietro, and I had extensive conversation with Yvonne Tortis, the administrative assistant who sent that email. And I would first, so let's see. Deliberation. Open meeting law defines deliberation as an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. Distribution of a meeting agenda, scheduling, or procedural information, or reports or documents that may be discussed in a meeting is often helpful to the public body members when preparing for upcoming meetings. These types of communications generally will not constitute deliberation, provided that, when these materials are distributed, no member of the public body expresses an opinion on matter within the body's jurisdiction. Additionally, certain communications that may otherwise be considered deliberation are specifically exempt by statute from the definition of deliberation. For example, discussion of the recess and the continuance of a town meeting pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10(a) is not deliberation. So to be deliberation, the communication must involve a quorum of the public body. A quorum is usually a simple majority of the members of the public body, in our case, that's five, as you know, tonight. Thus, a communication among less than a quorum of members of a public body will not be a deliberation unless there are multiple communications among the members of the public body that together constitute communication among a quorum of members. And then it just says that courts have held that the open meeting law applies when members of a public body communicate in a serial manner in order to evade the application of the law. So if I send Counselor Steves one, he sends it to Counselor Nash, he sends it to Counselor Manna, who sends it to Counselor Morales, then now we are in violation.
Yeah.
So let's make that clear. So in this case, this email was sent to all of us, for those who maybe opened it or didn't open, and it was also sent to department heads because, in conferring with Counselor DePietro, and I know we have that memo here, just want to make sure that we have the memo, which is now public document. Do you have your copy in front of you?
It's right behind you. I think.
Not gibberish. No, let me take yours. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at my other, this is my original document, so I didn't have it there. So Counselor DePietro, and this is now, this is public document. Counselor DePietro sent this memo out. In talking with him, I questioned the allegation in terms of intent. He said that he had typed it, he's not very computer literate, he sends emails, of course, but he doesn't do well with attachments. So he typed up, or had his secretary actually type up, the memo, and it got printed off. He came in and he specifically asked the administrative assistant if she had all the emails for the department heads and such, because he didn't have everyone's email. And then he asked her if she could send this out, and she said, sure. I asked her the same questions separately, completely separately, and she indicated to me the course of events that happened, and they conferred with Counselor DePietro's, that he had just asked if she could do it for him because he didn't know how to do it. So, so as far as intent, it's my opinion that there was no mal-intent to do it to escape open meeting laws. If anything, there certainly was an ignorance to the open meeting laws, which is not acceptable. We all need to be mindful of what they are and how they read, and there's certainly plenty of opportunities to do that. Is it, is it, was it a deliberation? Well, let's see. We have a letter here, and certainly there were some opinions put. It was, according to Counselor DePietro, who isn't here, and I'm happy to let him talk when he gets here at another meeting, his intent was to summarize what happened at the meeting and bring it to everyone's attention, what his thoughts were on it. According to him, not realizing that by expressing his opinion then in putting these things together, that that would matter. Sort of like minutes, but a little more than minutes. So he wrote to the town council, all department heads, and the town manager. So just in his title alone, we all knew it was being sent to everybody, but if he had placed it in the packets, if he had done something differently, it would not have constituted an open meeting law violation, an alleged open meeting law violation, because I'm not the judge and jury here. However, I would not, I would encourage us not to do what Counselor DePietro did. And he writes, "As DPW chair, I was put to task by the council chair to research the chain of events that lead to the purchase, that led to the purchase of a capital item, a forklift now housed at the DPW building. As a result of my time spent on this subject and personal review of charter, I came to the following conclusions. One, as defined by charter, the transfer of department funds for this purchase needed approval by council. Council was not consulted. Two, the final purchase of this capital item needed approval by council. Council was circumvented. Three, an obvious problem exists in the current understanding by management as to when council approval is required by charter for such expenditures. Four, there is need for more specific language, definition, and communication between council and management regarding such expenditures. With these conclusions in mind and a request from the council chair, I ask for an agenda item to be posted at DPW Subcommittee to open a dialogue with respect to improving both councils and management's understanding as to the correct procedure going forward regarding such expenditures. Regrettably, a defensive posture was taken by some department heads and management. I therefore feel the need to further express that it was not my intention nor councils to tie the hands of our departments by overburdening them with requests for monies that are required to operate on a day-to-day basis. I concede that charter does not clearly define where to draw the line. However, any reasonable person can see the broad difference between the purchase of a $27,000 capital item and a roll of toilet paper. Perhaps this discussion, quote, "ruffled some feathers," end quote, "so be it. No progress is ever made without a little pain and effort. I commend all our department heads and management for doing the job they do with the sometime-limited resources afforded them. Please don't think for a moment that this council and the citizens of Southbridge do not have a reason to be proud of the infrastructure safety and hard work that you provide our community every day. This said, I believe that as a group, management and council can and should pursue a clearer definition regarding fiscal procedure. I look forward to such an outcome, quote, "Please don't kill the messenger," end quote, "submitted with regards and respect, Mark DePietro." And he signed it. So, as you can see, he did state his opinion. He summarized the information that he had researched and was, I was at that meeting, and had, and it was discussed at great length. It's actually on YouTube, you can watch the video from Cable. Thank you, Cable, for allowing us to use your cameras. However, it is what it is. There's an opinion stated, he sent it in, and it clearly was going to everybody. So I don't think he was trying to hide that fact. That's just my opinion. You all have your own opinion. And so in this case, we have to remember that if he had just summarized what had happened as in minutes-type of summary with what people said, it would not have been an issue. But because, in his opinion, as he put it, you know, this certainly is suspect to an open meeting law violation. What I believe this council needs to do, as I said earlier, is to address the open meeting laws, to read thoroughly. All of us need to read thoroughly, because I believe there are numerous violations going on in this town hall. We'd be taking these up every week if I filed all of them. It's a shame that we couldn't have come to a talk about this without going to this lun. What we have to do as a public body, if this is indeed our take-up, or if we ever change the date and we take it up within 14 more days, a letter has to go to the AG's office with, and a letter to the complainant, as I said earlier, just saying what we did. And as long as everyone's satisfied, if the complainant is satisfied that we've rectified this problem, then it will end there. If not, they have the right to, in 30 days, to send a letter to the AG's office, and which would then concur with the complaint, and then they would look into it further. So it will be totally up to Counselor O'Clair after this point, after the point of sending a letter to the AG's office. Likewise, I imagine she could also remove the complaint from the town clerk's office and go no further, but we'll discuss that after this. So I, now I'm open to, I guess I'm open to, you've heard my part, I guess. So I'm gonna go back with Counselor Manna first, if that's okay? Because she.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things. She states that in December 2017, Counselor DePietro was warned, but I.
I don't know.
How was he warned? I mean, who warned him? Didn't come to the attention of the town council that he could have been possibly been deliberating or anything back in December 2017? We didn't get no complaints. I also, I don't think, I agree. I also, I don't think, I agree, I don't believe there was any, the intent of this letter, that, to be honest with you, I didn't even see. I don't think his intent was malicious at all, or in a way. I don't, I think he, I honestly believe that he didn't know he was violating an open meeting law. He is a newer counselor. I mean, he's not that new, but he is still a newer counselor. I'm not sure if he's been to any of the open meeting law sessions in regards to deliberation. I'm not sure how many people, besides myself, and I know you, we've gone to many of them in the past. The laws do change, and we do need to keep up on them, but I do not believe that Counselor DePietro did anything purposely. I think he did this to, you know, he saw a concern, and he wanted to address the concern. Should he have done it differently? Yes, now we see that. But did he know that at that time? No. Should he have asked? Maybe. Maybe not. Because some people maybe think they ask too many questions, and they're afraid to ask, you know, another question, you know? I mean, so I really, and honestly, I do not believe that Counselor DePietro did anything purposely to violate any type of open meeting laws. And then I see in this little box, as a member of the public body, I have noticed recurrent trend in certain counselors sending emails to deliberate outside of open meeting. I don't get it. When she was first on council, I saw her throw out emails.
Okay, let's keep it to the subject at hand. And so let's, let's go to what's at hand. Deliberation on the internet, and it is, it's a guilt situation from all, I think, at some level. The town manager tends to send us information, counselors, good news, or counselors, bad news, or counselors, and then sometimes counselors respond back. Now, sometimes counselors will automatically say, "Please delete me from this thread," because they know it should not be going back and forth. If you want to talk, if he wants to independently say something and get a response from each of us independently, or if we want to respond, this is very important, please, it was very important that, that was one very important topic to bring up this evening. If we want to respond to somebody, we need to do it individually. You don't reply all. Do not hit the reply all button. That is very important, that we do not do that. We reply independently, and we don't become part of the email thread. That's what gets you in trouble.
So, Madam Chair, if we, I mean, I brought that up for a reason. I did it when I first also became a counselor. I sent out emails, and I was told that could be a possible violation, so I stopped.
Right.
You know? I mean, but now we bring up the subject of counselors posting on social media, Facebook, Twitter, and then you have other counselors that could possibly be putting in their opinions and stuff. So where does that, where does it end? Where does it begin? What do we do on the social media end? I mean, because...
Some would believe that they're exempt on social media, but if you can prove the quorum happens and there's discussion amongst those five members, then that would be an open meeting law violation.
You're not exempt from being a town counselor if you're on social media or not.
Okay, so let's stick to, and that's, this is part of it, I get it, but let's stick to the electronic communication. I have been saying it since the first time I went to a meeting. I remember when people would say, "You cannot, oh, you can't send an email. You can't send an email with..." And I said, "No, we asked specifically." I remember you being with me at MMA when we were very specific to what can be sent. You can send agendas, you can talk meeting dates, you can even disclose, you know, discuss and deliberate on those meeting dates what's good for everybody. It's the content of the agenda items that you should not be discussing in an opinion format.
You can't even discuss it at a party.
Right. If you have a quorum, you should not be discussing it in public. Exactly. One-on-ones, two-on-twos. You kind of joked earlier there was no quorum.
I guess my point is, I do not believe that Counselor DePietro did anything purposely, and I really think that he just didn't know.
Thank you for your opinion, so.
My opinion.
I appreciate that. Okay, so, yes, Counselor Steve's, thank you.
I'm inclined to agree with what Counselor Man said. However, I do point out, I'd like to point out that what the law says here is that note that the expression of an opinion on matters within the body's jurisdiction to a quorum of a public body is deliberation even if no other public body member responds.
Right.
I don't, I don't think Mark intended to violate it, but, and it's also, that phrase is also contradictory with the phrase up above it that says a communication must involve a quorum of the public body. It seems to be.
Well, what there's...
If this person's response, person's opinion doesn't go to everybody, is that a violation of the open meeting law?
Well, what you can't prove is whether everybody opened it up.
Right, that's true.
So that's another thing. You could argue that open meeting law doesn't, well, he sent it, but doesn't mean everybody had a computer and opened it up. But let's be clear, if he sent it in a...
You assume that he did.
Right, if you put everybody's name, and you have nine people, or eight people, or six, five more people listed in that one email, that's a quorum that you have now sent your opinion to, even if they do not respond.
Absolutely. And we should assume that, and that...
Unless you're, if you're sending it out for information purpose only, if you're sending a document, "Hey, I've got this, we're going to discuss this at the meeting." Boom. Not, "This is really good, let's discuss it at the meeting, just, here's what we have, let's discuss it at the meeting." That's fine. You know, the meeting date, the meeting time, the meeting place, the minutes coming back to you, that minutes and corrections of minutes and such, that is, that is fine. It's, it has to do with the content that should be discussed in the public.
Agreed.
Plain and simple. And frankly, everything we do is supposed to be discussed in the public, with the exception of those nine or so that are executive session discussions. So...
So the question that I have then is, how do we, how do we fix this so that everybody is all on the same page as far as making sure that we all do it right? Because everybody, everybody makes mistakes unintentionally.
We can't...
I don't think anybody intends to make mistakes.
Right.
And it would be nice, and one question I had, I know, you said that, I wish Counselor DePietro and Counselor Claire were here for this discussion. When you said you talked to Mark, what did, what did he say about...
He said, yeah, I just had no idea that that would be considered anything more. Said if you had just put it in the packet, if you had just done it differently, anything, pretty much, besides the way it got done. He, and he just, he said, you know, "I apologize, me a couple, you know, I just, I didn't know, I didn't realize." And he seemed very sincere. Yeah, I mean, he said it at the last meeting too, but he said it again when I discussed it with him. He just, you know, he goes, "What I said was right, but I just, I didn't know, I wasn't supposed, I wasn't supposed to do that." He goes, "You know, there's no excuse." I think, I believe he actually said that was no excuse, that's all he had to offer though, because he just didn't know. He knows now. So, and I think that's what Counselor Claire did say, is that she's hoping that we clarify with the members going forward. So I think the five of us are up here being very clear. Hopefully, they'll get a chance to watch, or we can discuss it again, and again, and again, and again, as much as we need. I also did contact the AG's office. Unfortunately, their rotation for open meeting law trainings, this, the spring is already set, it's spring into summer, so if we want something for the fall, they'd be happy to put us, you know, we have to just put us in the roster to get a date. But certainly, they are open, they are in other communities, it's not as easy as when they're here. I think the last time, I don't know, maybe a year, two years ago, for a good one. But then again, we're each our own keeper. We're elected individually, I've always said that. We may be a group up here, but we are independent counselors who decide whether we come to a meeting, whether, the only people that can be mad at us are the public who vote for us. We can all be mad at each other at some level, which is on an ongoing basis, but ultimately, the only people that really oversee us are the voters. So if we don't attend meetings, if we don't tell the chair that I'm not coming to a meeting, and we don't have a quorum, shame on the people who don't do that. If we, you know, whatever it is we do, we answer to the public. That's what it is. We don't get a paycheck from it, and even if we did, we still answer to the public, and they would be the ones. I was once told, you think of your representatives, your senators, those types of people, they're all elected. If they don't show up to the state house for any meetings, they're there for three years unless you take them out. You know, it's, it is what it is. But I would hope, I think we have a good, solid group, and, Counselor Nash, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No problem. Very lively and appropriate discussion. I'll grant everyone here that if you all agree with me on it. Having read the complaint from Counselor O'Clair, and having attended the same meeting and reviewed the document in question, I'll concur that I don't believe that Counselor DePietro intended to circumvent OML. However, I also will agree with what the chair said, that Counselor DePietro probably by now understands that there definitely could be open meeting law violations with what was contained within his letter. Ignorance is no excuse. We can all claim it, but at the end of the day, there are, there are an abundance of resources at our disposal. I attended one of those seminars, I think with Counselor Steve's, back in the fall, probably, up in Rutland. Yep. YouTube videos, and I should hope that Counselor, I won't say the Counselor, the complainant is satisfied should Counselor DePietro have made amends and acknowledged perhaps if there were a mistake here. And what's more, the remedy could be paying attention to some of the YouTube videos. If we can get some training, great. But at the end of the day, I'll also point back, and I can't speak for the complainant, however, I do recall at least one email back probably in the fall, or maybe it was in December, where one counselor responded to an email, and I thought it came from the chair, suggesting that this could potentially be an open meeting law violation. And I have to imagine that's where some of this might have come from. As with Counselor Man's statement, I don't recall anything specific addressed back in December to Counselor DePietro. However, we're all aware of what our obligations are as counselors. We should make ourselves as well-informed as perhaps Counselor, or the chairman has made us tonight. Appreciate the research that you put into this, because this is something I didn't look forward to, because quite frankly, it would have been my preference to reach out to Counselor DePietro myself and say, "Hey, that ain't right. Do your homework." That's my approach. But at the end of the day, it's a learning experience for everybody, and I certainly hope that we can move on. And if there is a need to continue the discussion, so be it. But at the end of the day, let's do our best to get through it, and let's be better educated on open meeting law. Like I said, there are plenty of resources. Thank you.
And to add, I'm hoping that by having this discussion publicly, hopefully there are people watching, maybe other committee member people and different things, this applies to everybody. This doesn't just apply to council. Anytime you do business for this community, that is under the council's jurisdiction, which is pretty much everything, because we are the policy setters, the executive board, anybody who is doing any type of business for the community that results in anything that we have to make a decision on, a vote on, or money or anything, it's under our jurisdiction. And so they have to be mindful of that, to follow the rules. And, hey, I was the one who said, when they came out with 40 pages and nobody polices them, or, you know, you beg them to help you out on violations, and they kind of go, "Well, you have to, you know, the council has to do it." I get a little bit upset about that. But so be it. We have taken it up, and if they want to discuss it some more, we will. So my intent will be to write up some type of a letter. I will include the information that I've given to you, to the AG's office, and let them know that, you know, we discussed it publicly, slapped everybody, and told them, "You need to do your job. The oath you took is important."
May I add a quick question? When you took a look at the, when you contacted the AG's office, did you actually get a list of upcoming trainings?
No, I didn't. I, sorry, I did not.
You didn't think of it?
No, I didn't think to do that. I was begging to get one here.
Yeah. Because it might be useful to know what that is and...
Yeah, it is listed, I mean, it's, yes. The, you know, Mass Attorney, Open Meeting Law, OML. And if you're ever concerned or curious, you can, if you Google up Mass Open Meeting Law Frequently Asked Questions, FAQ, up will come the area for meetings, or documents, or executive session. There's so many resources, and as Counselor Nash pointed out, I've watched some of the, some of the YouTube, it's kind of interesting, different people have given those presentations, some people I recognize from the, from the AG's office. And it's interesting to listen to what they have to say at the time. And then there's the trainings that we go through. You can just, you can do a full open meeting law training online. There's just a lot of resources, so we just need to be mindful of the rules and to adhere to them. And I think with today's technology, it gets, it's easy to, everybody goes back and forth, texting, emailing, all that stuff, and you really need to know when you send it to a group, what happens, so. All right. I'm going to say something too, that I'm going to take to heart. People complain, you know, sometimes tell me about open meeting law issues. Tonight, tonight was a perfect example where, you know, I was getting messages saying, "Open and close the meeting. You don't have a quorum. It's beyond the time. It's, you should be opening that meeting and closing that meeting." And there were 100 people or more in this room waiting for these appointments. And so I thank you, Counselor Man and Counselor Morales, for leaving Worcester and coming back to this meeting. Neither of you were, you were just going to be later than you were going to be, and you weren't going to be here at all, so I applaud you for that. We could not have gotten this done without you two this evening, and again, apologize for the delay. But generally, had we opened the meeting and closed, like Mr. San Angelo said, "Oh, I was going to do the presentation," and he couldn't do that, not if we were sitting up here. There is an appearance of a public meeting going on. There are, there are case studies on this, that if we had opened and closed and said, "Well, we're not having a public meeting now," but it was the time of the town council meeting, and we sat up here to listen to that budget presentation, we would have been guilty of, it would have been an appearance that we were at a town council meeting without a quorum, having a presentation. Now, if we had opened and closed, maybe shut cameras down for a few minutes, opened it back up with the manager saying, "Hey, I'm going to do a special presentation tonight on the budget," and we weren't sitting up here, no problem. If we're sitting in the audience watching, that would have been okay. But the fact that we would, it would have looked like we were meeting without a quorum, that's the problem. So just pointing out some of those little, little things that we should be mindful of and why we waited and waited, and we, you know, once they hang the gavel, yeah, I guess, I was, how could we do the pledge of allegiance first, but that didn't work. So I was very, very grateful for the, for the audience being so patient with us tonight.
If I can add, you know, the whole idea, of course, of the open meeting law, just to make sure that everything's transparent, and it reminds me of a conversation I had several years ago with somebody, I won't mention specifically who, but who recalled years ago having, having select, back when it was selectmen, having selectmen's meetings in people's kitchens and stuff like that. And obviously, the whole, whole point of the open meeting law is to prevent stuff like that from ever happening again. And I'm glad we're having this discussion, because, you know, when you bring up stuff like these letters and stuff compared to what happened years and years ago, this is relatively minor. And if we get, if we go nowhere beyond this kind of, this kind of violation, we're in good shape. Definitely don't want to see people doing behind this, behind closed doors and stuff that would violate open meeting law and executive session laws and all this kind of stuff, because that's, that's just not good government.
Correct. And, and, you know, for the record too, I mean, generally, what would happen at this point is if this is pursued, and they didn't, the complainant doesn't like what we've done or said we've done, and complains more, or then the attorney general's office usually will send a letter to the violator, or the alleged violator, saying, you know, "It looks like you might, there might be an appearance that you did this, or did that," or they might do a full investigation. Honestly, this, this is, in their, you know, my experience in conversations, a minor situation, as long as it's corrected. If Counselor DePietro gets, you know, five more warnings on him, then they're going to take it and probably fine him or do something if I'm the town, you know? So generally, this, it's nice, it's a good learning opportunity. I don't thank them for that, because I wasn't looking forward to this either, but I'm glad we're all discussing it this evening, so. All right. Anybody else for anything? Okay. So I don't know that there's anything required on a vote-wise. The idea is that the public body sends a message back to the AG, and I'll go from there. All right. Okay. So...
Can I recommend when you send, when you send the letter to the AG, you include the minutes?
Sure.
Just so that they'll have the discussion?
We can do that, yeah.
If that's relevant?
My plan was to, you know, give the information I gave you, and whatever else. Okay. All right. So that was it. We are at Counselors Forum, and we'll start with you, Counselor Morales, since you're over there on the lonesome.
I'm actually all set. Have a great night.
Thank you for being here again. All right, we're going to move over to Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a lot tonight, it's been a long meeting, productive meeting, I think. Just a couple of quick notes, one of which is that I did see that Recreation Director Roenfeld was seeking volunteers for the all-in after-school program at West Street. As I understand it, his commitments are for Tuesdays and Thursdays, so if anyone is interested, please reach out through the Recreation Director. You will need to have a recent core form on file with the school department. Also, want to just reiterate what we said during subcommittee reports, that Thursday night, 6:30, I have it in my head that I said Veterans Room, but I'm pretty certain it's the Rice Conference Room, because the Veterans Room is in dismay right now.
It's on the website.
If it's on the website, that's, that's the right one. But again, we have several budget presentations and discussions, including Bay Path, where Mr. LaFlesch and Mr. Yakabuchi will be on hand. Also, let folks know that I have invited the receiver to sit in on that meeting, I expect him to be there. He is not on the agenda, so it's not formal. He is just looking to meet a few folks and let people know that he is available. Hopefully, he'll be there.
Hopefully, he'll be there. Just a reminder as well, that I would love to, during budget season, maybe revisit some of the town manager's goals and objectives. I had a chance to look at those tonight before I came to the meeting, and one thing that came up as the town manager was presenting the budget. Not to put you on the spot, I don't expect a response, Mr. Town Manager, but among those goals was a financial plan that would examine additional sources of revenue and/or potential cuts. None of us wants to talk about it or look forward to it, but we need to be realistic with where we're going. So those will be questions I'll be asking during subcommittee, that's my obligation and my commitment to this community. I'll also, just in that same vein, state that while those numbers are definitely scary to some of us, it's our problem to own, that's why we're here. I'm not scared, I don't like it, but I expect that we're gonna stop what we're doing, do a really good intense evaluation of what this financial situation is, what the budget's going to really look like, and we're gonna own it. That's the only way I wanna leave that. I also just need to make a statement, because someone did say to me a couple of weeks ago, "Boy, you look down a lot when you're up there." And I think that some of you understand, my eyes are very sensitive to these lights. Tonight, I got up during the town manager's budget presentation and stood away from the light. I just can't keep looking up. So please forgive me, I don't lack confidence, I love looking people in the eye, but the lights are just so annoying to me, and that's due to my own personal sensitivity. The last thing from me tonight is, it was refreshing to walk in the town clerk's office today when I was at town hall and see the nice paint job that the DPW has done in there. It makes all the difference. And what's more, Maddie and Julie and Evelyn seem to be very happy about it, so kudos to Department of Public Works, and thank you for the good work in there. That's all. Thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. Counselor Nash, I will not be able to attend your meeting Thursday night, I do apologize. And Counselor Steves, the twenty-eighth agenda for general government, I, I am committed to a project for school on Wednesday night, so I am not able to attend, I apologize. I don't know which is worse. So, also, do we know, is the time up for, like, pulling papers to run for town council? Or when, when is that deadline?
April 24th.
Right, to turn them in. But you have to take them out, to be able to turn them in.
Okay, so, yeah. So, I mean, maybe we should, like, encourage people to take a walk over to town clerk's office and pull some papers and go get some signatures and, you know, run for town council. We do have some people that already pulled papers, but, you know, we'd like to see a good, I'm not saying it's not a good pool, but a larger, good pool of people out there and, you know, get involved in our community, so think about it. That's all. I'm done.
Great. Counselor Steves?
Excuse me, I do have a couple of quick things. One is that on Thursday, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, over at the hotel and on the radio station, is the annual Food Share Radio-Thon. So as I'm sure you know, that there's a, despite, besides the, the financial issues we heard earlier, there's a lot of people in our community and in neighboring communities who have issues with finding enough food to eat. And you hear all the euphemisms about being food insecure, they're hungry, and they need some help. And Food Share helps do that kind of stuff, and supplies, as if you've been down on, over, down, just down the street over here, their pantry is just down the street, over here on Elm Street. And if you've ever spent in there, you can see that they try to keep a pretty good stockpile of stuff there, and the people go down there and pick it up on a regular basis. And it's unfortunate that there's such a need, but there is. So if you can get out there and support them and tune into the Radio-Thon, or, or you can check it up on, I think you can, it's also being broadcast here on the cable station, so you can check it out on, on live all day that day as well, so please help support them, because they do a bunch of good stuff. Another is also that I wanted to point out that, let's see, for, if you're interested, the zoning board is doing their public hearing tomorrow night at 5:30 on the 40B project that's being proposed for the AO property there. On Wednesday, the hospital and the family, sorry, it's the Family Health Center over off of Orchard Street is doing a grand reopening for their dentist's thing. If you have a, if you have need for those kinds of services, they're available in town. And SHOT's doing something at one. And also, I've been going to a couple of the events, it's not quite in town exactly, but some of the events that Nichols College does, and if you have a chance to go over there and you wanna just learn something and sit in on some of their presentations, their Fisher, their Fisher Institute does a whole bunch of presentations from, from specialists and professors and, and all kinds of people coming to the college and talking to the public, and it's open to the public, it's not just students, although it's almost always students. And so they had an interesting discussion today about, about, called Veiled Intentions, about a professor who was coming up and talking about US foreign policy as it relates to Islam and women, and there's all kinds of stuff like that that they do up there. So if you just wanna go up there and just sit in and learn stuff, they do all kinds of interesting things, and check out their website to see when things are coming down the pike. I mean, they have a fishbowl discussion on Sex and Power on Wednesday, which I've only sat in one of those, and it's basically, it's basically in the round, so people bounce in and out of a table and throw their opinions around, and it's not actually a presentation, it's basically a community discussion. So it's kind of interesting. And, let's see here, also Household Hazardous Waste Day is Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And I think that's all I have at the moment.
So, before you do the meeting date, I just wanna mention that, two things, one, I forgot earlier, we are working, I am working to put together a council of the whole meeting, potentially next week, in regard to some of the charter issues that we have brought up at that DPW meeting and other times, along with the DPW item. So I will let the councillors know if that, it comes to fruition for next week, very soon. And also, Happy Easter to everybody, because that's coming up next weekend. You mentioned it. Okay.
Oh, and the next council meeting is Monday, April 9th, here in the chambers, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, great. So we do have an executive session on the agenda this evening. Item number thirty-nine is vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with result respect to litigation, including Toxic Action Center, Inc., and all versus Casella Waste Systems, Inc., et al., United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts, Case Number 417 CV 40089 TSH. If, I do declare that this will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the town, and we will adjourn from executive session this evening. So that will require a roll call vote if we-